Okay, it's 7 o'clock. And it's time for the planning board to open up its meeting. And I assume we're being recorded? Okay. The thumbs up there. All right. I understand that our first 7:00 hearing for West Tech Drive has been postponed through some unknown circumstance. Which Adam, I think is the only one who knows.
I got a call from their attorney. He indicated that they would like to continue. He said that there were some mitigating circumstances that had nothing to do with the board or the plans, and the owner wished to put off until the 10 December meeting.
All right. And the next meeting that we have, do we have any A and Rs?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Before we move on to A and Rs, if we're going to do the continuance, I would need a motion and a vote.
You need that one? Okay. For that, all right.
I'd make the motion that we continue West Tech Drive here until the December...
December 10th.
December 10th meeting.
Did they say that would be all right?
They did. They said they'll be all set by then. I think that they have two minor issues with Graves that they have to wrap up. And I talked to Jeff Walsh today, and he expects to have a letter to me in the next day or two.
All right, good. So we have a second to...
10 December at 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Continue it, okay. Do we have a vote?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. We have a vote. Okay, the A and R, One Sophia Drive?
Yep. That would be...
232 North Oxley Street.
This is One Sophia Drive. It is over in Arboretum Village. They're doing land swaps from one lot to the other. It's a lot line adjustment. It's not affecting the overall size or shape of either lot. And it's both in Worcester and Auburn, so you'll note that there's slots for both planning boards to sign.
So you looked this over, Adam?
I did.
Was there any issues that you saw?
No. I mean, it's internal corrections that shouldn't affect either lot in the long run.
Are there any questions?
Does that pipeline go under the Mass Pike? I think it does. Because they used to use it to fill those tanks on Milbury Street down by Ballard Street. No questions?
Ronnie, do you have any questions on that A and R?
No.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the A and R.
A motion, we approve the A and R.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. What do you want signed, Adam?
The two papers and the Mylar would be great.
What's today's date? 11th?
12th.
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 Seems to have lost its cap in its travel, though. Is this the law promising? It's what I've been scrolling away.
It's new, it actually works.
Seems to have lost its cap in its travel, though. Is this the law promising? It's what I've been scrolling away.
It's new, it actually works.
Okay, we have a 7:05 hearing. The applicant is the town of Auburn requesting...
We also have a second A and R.
Oh, doesn't say it here.
Should say 232 Oxley Street.
Yes, it does. I thought that was in the A and R.
Nope.
They have to approve one, and not approve the other.
232 Oxley Street is on the corner of Williams Street. Currently, there is a home that resides on a 30,000 square foot parcel. The current owner would like to parse it into three buildable lots. One containing the existing house, two fronting on Williams Street. He hasn't indicated this, but I'm assuming that he would look to build single-family homes on those based on the size and zoning district.
Jonathan, you have any questions on that one? Ronnie?
I need all the fronters' researches there.
They do. They need frontage, lot size, and regularity factor.
Sounds like a plan.
Do we have any...
Adam, let's just...
Oh, okay. Let me see. Do we have any issues with it? Any of you have any issues with it? Okay. Make a motion to accept the A and R.
I would make a motion to accept the A and R on...
232 Oxley Street.
232 Oxley Street north.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Is there not water access on Williams Street? Water access as in public water? Yeah, they're bringing easement through the middle of the lot. That may be an easement. I'm not sure.
That's why I always ask twice. Twice, if there's any question. You have two chances.
Didn't impact the whether or not it was okay. Just more of a curiosity factor. Make it work for that one, huh? It's gonna bring them all over for you. All three, please.
There was no Mylar on it?
Yeah, they signed the Mylar.
I said there was only three. I signed two plus the Mylar. Three. That's three.
Sure there's any other A and Rs hidden around here someplace?
There are not any.
You sure now?
Positive.
Okay, are we ready? 7:05 hearing, applicant, town of Auburn requesting a site plan approval for the use of a nonprofit educational institution as allowed under Section 3.2.3.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws. On the property located at 7 West Street, 780 Southford Street, Auburn Mass, MAP 16, Plaza 58 and 77. All right, who's gonna represent the town of Auburn?
I think that would be me. I'm Eric Hall from Lamont-Savano Architects. With me tonight also is Mark Imzy, school building committee chairman, Dale Caldwell, the owners' project manager from Skanska USA Building, Matt Bressard from Bressard Design and Engineering, the site civil engineer, and Matt Murva, the site landscape architect. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the project, and then we can either turn things over quickly to Matt and Matt to do an overview of their respective disciplines, or we can just go straight to your questions, whatever your pleasure is. Adam, what do we do? What do we need to do to get that...
The mouse will control it.
Okay, all right.
And this one here is a touchscreen, so if you touch it, it will move stuff around. If you get too close, when you're hovering in front of it, you might see stuff move around.
All right.
So don't be shocked.
I will...I'm just going to give kind of a brief, quick overview of the project. Southford Street runs along the right side here. West Street along the top. The primary entrance for the school is from West Street. It's at this location here, which is between the fire department, training facility, and the Randall Building here. This is the curb cut for the fire department. We come in here at the main bus drop-off for buses along the front. There is a main entry at this point here, and also there's a lobby extends through the building here. There's also an entrance on the backside at that location, and we have a driveway that wraps around the entire building. This is, the intent is for the buses to come in this way, drop off along here, or pick up, and then exit the building back out to West Street, while the parent pickup would extend around the building at the, to the rear entrance where they would drop off or pick up. The building's divided pretty much in half by the lobby. This is the academic side. The classrooms are on this side. The public community area is the gym and the cafeteria on the right side of the lobby. Some site features, we have parking for about 160 cars. There is parking primarily in the front, but we also have some around the rear side along the driveway as that passes around as well. We have a multi-use field with an add alternate to make that a synthetic turf field. Base bid, that would be natural grass with an irrigation system. That would be for soccer, football, field hockey. We also have an irrigated practice field up in this area here, school garden. Kitchen entrance is in this area here. We have some outdoor containers, dumpsters with a fence screen and gates. Fuel, the school will be fueled by propane gas, so we have some underground tanks out in this location here with boiler protection, that sort of thing. Our utilities enter the building here. Our water service will come from West Street and connect through to Masonic Circle. We've met with the fire department to locate fire hydrants at the front and rear of the building, as well as one over here. The emergency generator and transformer would be located right in this area here and receiving area and mechanical rooms right in this area here. The Randall School will remain, so that use will continue. The fire department will continue to use that building, as will the district offices that are in there now. It will also continue to use the training facility. We have proposed some fencing around that facility, as well as some landscaping for screening, and have discussed the operations with the fire department. The driveway here, you see it connects to Masonic Circle. This would be a vehicular gate here, access that would normally be closed off and locked, open only for emergency vehicles or on special events as the need arises. Having said that, I think we can turn it over to... Sewer will tie into...
I think you got most of the stuff I was gonna... The sewer is gonna connect into the existing sewer in Masonic Circle that heads out to Southford Street. Pretty standard, you know, it's nothing too elaborate or unusual at any of the site utilities, really. If, I don't know, if the board's interested, I could talk about the stormwater management scheme or...
We don't care about that right now. That's too early.
That's fine.
What I'd like for somebody to talk about to me is the, is the single entrance to that project. And the fact that they can't use Southford Street to get in or out because it's a lock gate. What were you guys thinking about? Plus having that exit on West Street. I mean, how many feet is there between the light and that entrance to the school?
Quite a bit.
We have, we have had a traffic study done.
Really?
We looked at Masonic Circle as an entrance point. It was deemed a poor entrance location because of the fact that there is no signal there, so traffic coming out is forced to either make a right-hand turn or make a very difficult left-hand turn there with traffic. But the number of vehicles that currently, parents that drop off or pick up their students at the school, we were trying to maximize the queuing length around the building, so that's, that's why you see this, this long queuing area to the, to the backside here.
What if there was a fire going on, okay, and the fire apparatus had to move out of there quickly during the morning bus route or the afternoon bus route? What would happen then?
Well, the buses are contained to this area here, and this is a...
They gotta get there, though.
24th...
They gotta get there. They gotta come down West Street to get there, right?
Right. Or in Masonic Circle.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, my other one's leaving. Yeah, West Street station.
All right, I'm gonna leave this up to... Ronnie, have you got a question about this here?
Is Mr. Imzy here?
Yes.
Can you just explain to us a little bit on the selection process? Because one of the biggest problems I got is the fact that it's there. I mean, I'm...
For the location of West Street, or...
Yeah, that the school is on West Street with BFI and all the things that are down on Hardscrabble Road, and there's tremendous crosscut traffic from Lester Spencer, Charlton coming down there, especially at the rush hours, at those hours.
Yeah.
And then the proximity to the police, to the fire station, the small width of the road, and everything else that's down there.
Well, I mean...
And I wish, and I'm just saying this, I wish that probably somebody from your committee would have maybe came, come to us while that was in process to just say before you brought it before town meeting, but I'll let you talk.
Okay. I mean, we reviewed several different sites, you know, as well as building on Swanson Road, the existing location, looked at Packer Chug, and we looked at Prospect Hill area. And feasibility-wise, this is, you know, the least expensive of all of ours, even with the purchase and stuff. I know Eric kind of left out some of the traffic study stuff they've done. They did some studies with timing the buses and stuff. They, they came back, you know, there's some might, there's gonna be some slight modification to the streetlight timing at West, West Street and Southford Street for the release times and stuff, or the inbound times, but right now the...
Those, those trucks are, half the time, those big trucks, the rubbish trucks that go down there, they, they got one axle over the other side of the road. And the police chief has had a lot of concern with that, and they've had the Mass State Police Truck Team there on several occasions and other things. I'm just, it's, it's, it's not a great situation. And I live up on Rochdale Street, so I travel it all the time. And the traffic has just increased every week. There's a little bit more from whatever comes out of Lester Spencer, and everybody knows it now as a shortcut.
Yeah.
I think West Street should be widened at least another five feet.
I mean, that's one of the reasons why we stayed away from even putting a side, you know, proposing a sidewalk along there. The pedestrian access is out through Masonic back to Southford Street.
See, the thing is, you got pedestrian access, you're telling them, that's like when you say to somebody, "No left turn" when you pull out of the place. You know, it, the kids, we had one fatality right at that corner with the car dealership already.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, you can say, "Don't..."
Yeah.
"Don't walk there." The kids are gonna go wherever they want, and the cars are gonna be whizzing down there and...
We have, we have proposed sidewalks from the school out via Masonic Circle to Southford Street because of the fact that West Street is, is a narrow street.
Right, but they're, they're gonna look for the shortest route. They're gonna be walking, and they're gonna...
One of the things we looked at was that, you know, because of this, we, I envisioned early on that, you know, Masonic would probably be like an inbound traffic, and West Street would be their outbound traffic out of the site. But the traffic studies came back, you know, telling us to stay away from that right now, so...
What traffic study people did you use?
It was a niche engineering.
Right. And they did, they went up to the existing middle school, did the timings, you know, studies out of there with all the buses and the parent pickup and drop off.
There's a lot of activity at that school.
Oh, there is. So they were up there looking at that, and then they came down here and looked at the activity around here to...
It's a lot of better access, I think, at the junior high currently than with the roads.
Ronnie, is your concern that people are gonna come out of the West Street entrance and then go left?
No.
Neither way.
No, most people would be going right. They'll go left after they find out that they got a nightmare going there during the Christmas season and everything else with the traffic, but it's just...
If they go right, it was a straight shot, right?
The concern is with the trucks that travel on that road and the traffic in the businesses that are down on Hardscrabble. Then you do have some with the, not a lot probably, that the fire department would...
So are you concerned about vehicles or pedestrians or both? Because I've heard...
Vehicles and pedestrians.
Because I've heard both.
Kids walking, kids walking, you know, if there's ever an emergency, just the location... Where was Packer Chug? Where was the location there?
Pack, it was, ended up way, it was kind of connected through from the Pappas Fields, and then it would drop back down and in because of the topography and also the ongoing, well, it's the ongoing farmland areas that the state doesn't allow, you know, for projects to go onto, you know, existing farmland. So it'd end up back, we were almost, I think that was 2,000 feet or more back on a main, you know, roadway to get back, just from the Pappas Fields back to the, to the site.
Grading was an issue. Wetlands were a real, real issue at that site.
I don't think it's farmed anymore on that part. The other part is...
He has it probably in 61A, Act of 61A, it can't be...
No, the town owns it.
The town owns that.
But there's a portion of it that is a portion used as cornfields.
Still tealed and sealed and stuff, yeah, so unfortunately, it's still in their eyes.
I don't see, I don't see any problem with your plan, okay? I just can't believe the, the, the single access exit. I mean, that, that doesn't, I would never, personally, I would never go for that. I would want to see two complete entrances and exits on that property.
There's an exit on the left here for the main exit in, right?
This is, this is for the parent, parent queuing.
Drop off, yeah.
You know, once they, once they've picked up or dropped off, they continue out to here.
So you got an exit in, the main entrance is in.
This is, this is in and out. This is a 28-foot wide...
That's right. That's between the fire station and its, its practice area. And then the other one is to the right side of the practice area. It must be almost touching the pond.
It's almost, it's opposite, directly opposite the fisherman's access there.
The boat ramp.
It's, and it's pretty much in line with the access road that the water district uses to access there was.
So nobody will probably be able to use that boat ramp anymore.
Through the chair, you mentioned that you had a traffic study done. Were there recommendations that came out of that traffic study?
There were recommendations, and I can...
And are they reflected in the plan? Will they be reflected in the plan?
They have been. They have been reflected. Some of those, some of these involve some off-site improvements that are not currently part of our scope of work, but they are, they are recommendations that we would endorse. They, one of them is to add signage and flashing lights to indicate this is a school zone on West Street.
That's not standard?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
It would be a standard recommendation.
But I mean, I guess, I assume that when you build a school, that's something that automatically gets, that gets put in as part of the...
It's off-site work. It's, it's, it's an improvement that we do not typically undertake.
Now, how many buses can you queue up in front of the school?
We can queue up approximately seven buses along the...
And where, and where will they be? Queuing where?
They'll be queuing from here around to, to here.
Okay. But out in the street to come in?
They would, they would not queue up out there. The buses arrive periodically. They, they...
Well, they, they come together, they come pretty close together.
They don't leave periodically. They leave at the same time.
They might come a little, not quite at the same minute, but they leave like you said, real close together, and they come, and just them turning in, and the other car's trying to, I mean, everybody else, you can't pass, no one, if they're out in the road on the right before they turn left into the site, they're not gonna be, no one will be able to pass.
If they, how many feet is it from that first driveway that you say the buses are coming in on? The 24-foot wide driveway?
This 28-foot.
28-foot, okay. How many feet is it from there up to the traffic light?
Do you have a, do you have a figure on that?
A thousand?
Do you have to guess? Kind of guess, maybe?
There's something in there. There's a...
Each bus is 40 feet long.
I can guess this one, make a guess.
Probably not much more than a thousand if it's that.
I don't think it's that much.
No.
Turn it back to the bus question. How many buses drop students off at the middle school on a given morning?
There, there are a total of 10 to 12 buses.
Okay, so...
But they're limited to three at a time.
Well, but you can queue seven.
Right.
And so that's 65 to 70% of the total buses? And it takes approximately 10 minutes at most to empty a bus? So you have the ability to move, cycle them through? It's not like they come in and park and sit there until all the buses get there?
Correct.
One of the problems they have with the middle school at this time is they can't queue enough buses in front of the school at the, at the end of the day, so that many of the kids have to sit in their classroom.
700 feet.
Yeah. They have to, they have to sit in their classrooms.
Is there room, is there room to widen the, widen West Street on the left side coming down to make an additional lane so all the buses turning into West Street could immediately get off of West Street onto this separate lane and do what they have to do to enter the premises rather than...
That, that project would involve...
Yeah, I mean, technically, there is room within the right-of-way. You'd probably wind up maxing out the right-of-way pretty much, and there's also some...
Conservation.
Yeah, some conservation issues on both sides of these streets, so it's not, it's probably feasible, the complicated permit-wise.
You bring up a, one of the recommendations was, at some point, Mitch felt that the amount of traffic on West Street would warrant a separate left-hand turn lane at the intersection. The intersection was just reconstructed in 2010.
Yeah. Wasn't done right, but that's all right.
So what they're feeling, their feeling is that at some point, with the amount of traffic that cuts over to the Mass Pike along that street, and they're aware of that, they saw, they saw that, there would be a need for that, for that left-hand, additional left-turn lane.
The existing road looks like it's about 24 feet wide now, so you wouldn't necessarily, I think, you could probably accommodate an extra lane without a full bus width, you know, a full 12 feet. It might, you know, you could widen it by six or eight feet, and you could accommodate an extra...
You'd have to do it on the school side, because those other houses, they're almost on the street now.
Absolutely, no, I understand. That's what, that was my, yeah, that was my intention. Jonathan, do you have anything else to say about that? Any questions, Adam?
Well, my question, what's...
My question, what's expected of us now at this point, Adam? What's the process going for? Is this going for a peer review?
It is. It's out of Graves right now. Uh, I believe Matt got a DEP comment and so Jeff is waiting for that to start the stormwater. Uh, he expects that, depending on how quickly that gets turned around, he should be able to have a letter back before Thanksgiving, at least an initial letter. So if the planets align, you could theoretically see this again on the 10th with some corrections made and possibly even a second review depending on the-
That's our goal.
The detail of the letter and how quickly they turn those corrections around, that kinda stuff. Uh, ultimately, it's gonna be, it's the same as any other site plan. Uh, you have essentially the same authority. Uh, clearly, they're working with a budget that they have outlined. Uh, and it is a town project, so there's that on top of it. Uh, but at the same time, there are, you know, the traffic patterns are an issue. Uh, I know that I spoke with the fire chief, the police chief, uh, the water district and all of them have comment letters that they're putting together. Uh, they weren't able to turn them around based on some other commitments, but I know the fire chief said he'd probably have it, uh, early next week. I expect the water district around the same time. And I know the police chief raised some of the same concerns the board has raised about traffic. He said, um, you know, clearly Mary D is 100 years old, so traffic was a very different situation when that was built, but they have a, an awful time over there in the mornings and the afternoons with buses queuing in the street. And he's concerned that based on the width of West Street and the way the traffic pattern is, he doesn't wanna end up with that same thing. Uh, I know that the fire chief has some concerns about access for his trucks getting out. Um, sort of the same thing that was raised about, it's, you know, 7:30, the buses are queuing up to get in. Someone's house catches on fire, they go to respond, how do they get out? Uh, so those are some of the issues. I know the water district owns a significant piece of land that they have wellfields on directly adjacent to this. Um, you guys all got a copy of Eric's memo from the DCG. So we've gone over a lot of these issues with them. Uh, the water district has concerns about access to their wellfields. I know that Matt's been working with them to figure out what the best way to get them in there is. They don't go in there every day, but sometimes they need to get a 10-wheel drill rig in there. So there's some significant issues. Uh, I don't think that they're critical failure issues, but I think that there's some tweaking and-
It's significant.
I think that, uh, once Graves brings their, uh, their review letter back, everything will sort of clarify a little bit.
But personally, I wanna see some of those additional correspondence. Our typical process is also that we have a, you know, we don't report anything until we have a, you know, a letter from Graves saying that all of their major issues are resolved and there are things that, and then that leaves discretion of the board. Um, I do agree that West Street is a problem. So I think, you know, any consideration for that going forward, you know, would help your case going through this process here as well. But I know the committee has done a very public process and then a few public hearings. I know the site selection was also a very public process, as were the design and presentations that were provided, so appreciate that and look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, and I think that the purpose of tonight was, you know, you guys rely on Graves for a lot of the technical issues, but something like this, there's a lot of anecdotal issues and there's, uh, there's gut feeling. I think that the, and I don't wanna speak for the team, but I think what they wanted to do was sort of present the project and take a temperature of what issues the board might have and then work those into the review letter that Graves brings back.
Ronnie, go ahead. I'd like and hope that we're gonna require a traffic study of our own and then have it reviewed.
Well, you know something? I think that's a good idea. Because I can't, I just can't believe the, some of the things I'm hearing from that other traffic study, that everything's roses.
Yeah, I would wanna have a traffic study and then have it reviewed by someone and we can get some names of whoever, different people we could select. If you can give us some names.
Well, I wanna clarify what the request is. You're asking for a peer review of the completed traffic study?
No.
You're asking for an independent traffic study?
Independent traffic study where they're looking at this being a school.
At peak times.
Just a full-blown traffic study on this site that's gonna be-
Uh, I'm, I understand that. I'm trying to think of how we would fund that because-
Oh, well, heavens forbid they forgot something like that.
Well, no, no, I think-
The traffic study was completed specifically for the school. It's what they did already.
Correct.
The only problem we have with the, you know, I think that everybody's in the same ball, if all the wax hit. I think that the only problem that we have, that, you know, you're looking for a temperature of how we feel about it and how we're gonna react to this plan, okay? The temperature is that your building's great. It looks like all your landscaping is fantastic, okay? The entrances and exits to the school are a big issue, big issue. And I don't see, I don't see where you have them solved with what you've got here.
Eric, can you correct me if I'm wrong, Eric? But just one of the, one of the unique aspects of this type of project is by necessity, any off-site improvements are by default not technically part of the design and construction scope. So if there are municipal improvements that, you know, are being recommended by the traffic engineers for West Street, for example, they can't literally be part of this project's scope. Is that accurate?
From your point of view?
That's right.
From your point of view?
No, from the point of view of the school project funding and the individuals.
We understand that, but you know something? We're trying to, what we're trying to do is work with-
With the town.
We would like to, you know, we would like to work with you to get this completed, okay? I'm sure that everybody would like to work with you, all right? But not at the, not at the expense, not at the expense of destroying that whole area as far as traffic, okay? We're not, we're not willing to do that. I don't, I'm not willing to do it. I don't think Ronnie or Paul is willing to do it. Maybe Jonathan can go along with that too.
Well, I guess my only concern would be, would it be prudent then to start with having the engineer review the existing traffic study, see if they found any deficiencies in it, see if they-
I'm not, I'm not all right with that, no. Well, could we have it, Ronnie? Could we have a peer review of the traffic study that's been done? Which is gonna be the same basically as a peer review of the entire engineering? I'm not-
The data's the data for the most part. I mean, they-
I'm not in favor of that, no.
I think that-
I don't like it by whoever already did it. I want it independent of that. That's my feeling.
Well, it would be an independent party reviewing their work for the town, similar to Graves reviewing-
Traffic studies, they can, you know, they can swing them whatever way they want. I just don't go along with it.
I, and I guess from where I sit, I don't think the board has the authority to require that the applicant pay for an independent traffic study, but they can require the applicant to pay for a peer review of the study that they've already done and submitted.
Take a look and see where you might find the money that we could do a study with.
I mean, I can, I can speak to the town manager and see if there is funding for the board to hire an independent traffic engineer, uh, but I can't make any guarantees that she'll-
Is there any, maybe you know the answer to this. Is there any Chapter 90 money that would be available to do any work on West Street for that 700 feet?
I can't speak to how the DPW director has his Chapter 90 outlined. I think that, uh, we're in FY14 now. Uh, they're looking to open fall of 15, is still your timeline?
Yep.
Uh, so that would be FY16. So that's two years out on Chapter 90, so potentially. Uh, it's something that-
Could you find, could you find out for us just, uh, from Bill Coyle? Cause I mean, he's, he's done a great job so far on some of the roads and- Mark, are you chairman of the building committee too?
Yes, I am.
So where are we on the traffic study right now? As a taxpayer, I kinda have a problem with the town paying for a traffic study.
Well, we require applicants to come in.
I understand, but we, when we have the applicant-
This is the town, it's not, who picked the traffic study?
But when we have the applicant come in, we typically do a peer review of that. The town's gonna pay for a traffic study to review the town's traffic study.
No, that would be a completely independent- Well, if it was a peer review, it would be an independent, uh- Review. See, you're getting what you want. You're getting what you want, Ronnie, okay? You're getting an independent person- Well, if that's all we can do, I guess that's what it's gonna be, but I'm not happy with it. I'm not, I would want an independent study. Well, you're getting an independent study. Whoever they had.
Well, but we wouldn't use Niche to review their own work.
I know that, I know that. Sure, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
So the way- The way some, you know, interpretations of traffic studies and how they differ are really based on different interpretations of the actual traffic turning count data. And that's, you know, those are hard numbers that someone's, you know, done, you know, picked up in the field, the time they picked it up, the hours that they picked it up are all digits numbers. And then the actual analysis of those numbers is what goes into drawing the conclusions of the study. So if you had an independent traffic engineer review the conclusions that were derived from the Niche study, I mean, you're essentially doing the same thing as you're implying. It's really doing the same thing as getting independent analysis.
The peer review would also comment on-
I wanna see names of people we can select to review it.
The peer review would also comment though, if they only studied times between 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM. So they would comment on things like that and maybe recommend that we do additional study. But I've seen the way those traffic counts are done. And the traffic counts are pretty much traffic counts for those days and times.
If there was a problem with the actual data, it'd be, you know, glaringly obvious to anybody to review it.
If I might just add, I have on that flash drive the entire traffic study. Uh, so if you're welcome to copy that, distribute it. The numbers are not, you know, they're not cooked numbers. We didn't, we didn't make the traffic study or direct anybody to make the traffic study pass or suit our, uh, our design. We, you know, we worked pretty extensively with the Safety Advisory Committee. Um, they were a big part of the circulation process of how the, how the traffic moves around the site. Um, so, you know, we have had a fair amount of dialogue with, with the police and fire department. Um, and we incorporated many of the suggestions and recommendations that were made in this traffic study. I think there's only one thing that we did not do where they recommended that we close the access between here and here, between this parking lot and this driveway. We didn't feel that was an appropriate thing to do because we, uh, we felt there would be a need for emergency vehicles and potentially parents to get back into this parking lot, but-
What's involved, what's involved in keeping that Masonic Circle open?
Involved in terms of-
Well, you wanna put a gate up there with a lock and key on it.
Right, right. There's a vehicular gate, it'd be a swing gate, two bollards, so it could be tied, padlocked.
Why would you wanna do that?
Well, if there were a special event, uh, you know, something on the fields where you're expecting overflow traffic or something on a weekend or-
So why was the decision made to close that permanently and not just making Masonic Circle open?
Well, the feeling was that they got so many parents that parents would start using this as a shortcut and basically cut off, cut into the queue here. And you'd get a, you'd get a tremendous flow of traffic on Masonic Circle. They did, they did a warrant study, what they call a warrant study, to see if a, if a signal could be added at Southbridge Street and Masonic Circle. And it was, it did not meet the requirements for a, for a, uh, a signal at that.
Probably because there's the one that's right at West Street, right down from-
It's pretty close.
It's just too close.
It's close.
Well, and it's a DOT road, so it has a higher level. You have to have more traffic in order, if it were a local road, the numbers are different.
So they did make, and, and Niche did make the recommendation that that be kept closed. That was one of their, one of their recommendations. They did look at the, uh, the queuing along here, and I know that was a big concern of the fire department, police department, everybody involved in that was, you know, at the peak hours in the morning, would traffic queue up to the point where it would start to impact this, this entrance to the, to the site. And their, their results were that it would not. They did recommend that at peak hours that that signal be retimed to-
Yeah, cause it's, it backs up almost to the fire department driveway on some mornings.
Isn't that a forced signal anyway with the fire department?
The afternoon too, yeah.
To override, to come out?
I don't know if that is or not.
I know the one at, uh, Southbridge and Auburn Street is. They can override that and come through.
Okay.
I don't know why that-
I don't know if they have that cable. Oh, you mean with the, with the, uh-
See, the thing is, even if they, even if they could override, you go, whoa. If it's at a time when the people, the mothers and fathers are coming to pick up the kids and other people are going and then the other traffic's coming back and forth, there's no way they can get by, cause there's, the cars take up to two, the width of the road.
Well, and I think the difference is on Auburn Street, it's probably Opticom, so it's in the truck. So when they pull out, they're close enough with line of sight that they hit it and it trips it automatically. Whereas here, they're pulling out and there's some brush and there's that small curve in the road. So I don't know if it, if it has line of sight. I don't think they have like a, like a clicker like a garage door.
This, um, this needs, this needs to be rectified. The West Street, the width of West Street for that 700 feet or 800 feet or whatever it comes out to, that's gotta be widened, gotta be widened. And I know it's not your, part of your project because it's off-site. I understand what you're saying about that.
Well, if you don't interpret that to mean that we don't think it's an issue for the, you know, it shouldn't be part of the discussion.
It could be, it could be part. I mean, we could be, we could certainly be involved in it.
I don't know. I think you guys are doing the school, you're designing it and these issues are right there. I mean, private citizens have talked to me about it and other people that are concerned about it. And, uh, and being that I live there and travel on that road all the time, I see what the traffic is. And it's, you know, at 9:00 o'clock in the morning, it's not that bad. The light maybe has three or four, five cars. But at 6:30 to 7:30, quarter of eight, 8:00, it's, there's a lot of cars that go through there. Well, why don't we do this? This is kind of, do you have something else, Paul, you wanna add to it?
No, the lot is very restricted. That's, that was the thing that concerned me way back in the beginning. They should have opened it up more.
Go ahead.
I wanna go back to the traffic study issue because I, I don't think it's a problem to have a peer review done. Mr. Brooks said he wants to see names of consultants, so that means you wouldn't be selecting a traffic reviewer until December, because you can't do it over email cause it's the decision by the board. If you were to say tonight, we want a peer review, go and get somebody, I would probably call Laheed Karimi from VHB who did the review for, um, Blaker Street, the Ashworth Hill project.
Oh, the 200?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and he, he's done work in town before. He, I think he has a general understanding of what the board would look for. And outside of that, I'd probably have to do some digging to find it and that's gonna push everything back a little bit. Uh, if the board wanted to meet next week and just have a five-minute meeting, 10-minute meeting to go over peer review consultants, we could do that. Uh, otherwise, we're looking at probably tagging this out until January.
It would take a couple of months to find another one?
No, but we don't meet again until December 10th. So the board has to decide on, if you're looking for a list of names, the board has to make the decision. So I couldn't bring it back. I could send you all the names, but you couldn't actually vote until December 10th.
Well, would you agree on, uh, on this, uh, person that you, do you have done business with in the past? That he's recommending?
Yeah, I know, I think-
Would you be happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think we have to come back for a meeting.
Okay.
It's VHB.
Yes, that's correct.
We've heard of them. Another reason that this peer review is gonna be necessary, okay? Because we feel as though with a peer review of the traffic again, that we may be able to walk into Bill Coyle's office and say, "Bill, these are the recommendations. What can you do to help us? This might take care of some of the issues, okay? Not saying it's gonna, I'm just saying with Adam's help and whatever, they might be able to widen West Street. I would hope that they could, okay? That's gonna eliminate a lot of problems." That's gonna eliminate a lot of problems.
The study of the traffic that you did already, that'll be, have some value, but just the fact that the fire chief, the police chief and others, and Jimmy and Paul and all of us have concerns, I mean, you, you don't even have to see it, there's still concerns there that just exist.
So basically, I think what we should do is, uh, first of all, I'd make a motion to, um, use that peer review company and, um, get a peer review on the traffic.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a vote. And then, when would the, when would the peer review from Graves Engineering be coming back on this project?
I, I hope prior to Thanksgiving.
Oh.
So in the next week and a half, and, you know, again, some of that depends on information being submitted, but it seems like the applicant team is gonna be getting that over there, so it would probably be back before Thanksgiving. Uh, hopefully they could make the changes and turn it around so that Jeff would have, uh, some time to look at it prior to, uh, sending packets out for the December meeting. It's gonna be a little tight, but, um, we can...
Now, do you think that this, um, company that we asked you to use, do you think that they could have, um, any suggestions back and also, uh, a follow-up on that? Do you think that, uh, Bill Coyle could possibly give you any, um, news on what could be done on that West Street?
Well, we'll start with Bill. I think that, um, he could probably give me a general sense of whether or not he thinks it's a project he could fund and, you know, that he might be willing to do, um, you know, being that the intersection was rebuilt just three years ago, um, and, and it's a DOT, and it, well, I guess it's a DOT intersection, so they generally have a five-year moratorium on touching stuff that they do, so that makes it a little bit more complicated, but Bill will have more information on that. As far as the traffic study peer review, um, if I get in touch with him by the end of the week, that's almost a month between now and the next meeting, so hopefully he would be able to get something back to us, uh, but, you know, that all depends on a lot of different things, so I don't really wanna commit them to that.
Okay.
We could even hold extra meetings.
If they forget to...
You're planning on putting a shovel in the ground when, April?
It could be as early as April, yeah.
As early as?
March.
We're talking about the early bid package.
April, March?
Two thousand fourteen?
To put out an early, early site package so that they could begin site work as early as, uh, March.
That, that's kinda why we're in a little bit of a...
Yeah, well, cause we don't wanna hold you up.
No, that's, we appreciate that, but that's the main reason, they wanted to issue an early site construction bid package, which we're trying to issue in January, right? Is that right?
Correct.
We just wanna make sure that this, that this entrance, Egress entrance exit is gonna work.
When we did the...
I, I just, I personally, you know, I mean, what's done is done, but, uh...
Well, one of our goals for tonight's meeting, knowing that we weren't gonna have the peer review back for the general site engineering, was, you know, to discuss and flesh out, or, you know, flesh out these exact types of issues that, that the board members have, so that we know, you know, what the key, what the focus needs to be for the next few weeks.
What I would suggest that all of you do is, um, is try to see if there's any way, if in fact the town doesn't wanna fund, help fund or whatever, that widening of West Street coming down the road.
Yeah, but the state won't pay for that.
You, you know, I'm just saying, there's gotta be some way that you guys can maybe add it into some of your stuff. I mean, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not in the building aspect of it.
Usually, usually Jim, when, when it comes down from the state, they took it away from the Department of Ed and they gave it to the treasurer's office, which was a great, great, great plan, and, and it really moved everything right along. But they dictate what you can spend the money on. They dictate the size of the rooms, they dictate, uh, everything, and you have to conform to it. They do not pay for land acquisition, that's why we had to buy the land at the, uh, at the Masonic Hall. And when we did the high school, I think I had four hundred changes that they would put the shovel in the doggone ground.
Yeah. They also limit the, uh, the amount of money you can spend on site.
Site work, yeah.
They, they limit it to...
Eight percent.
Eight percent of the construction cost, which...
Maybe you can, maybe you can get the site people to do it a little cheaper and you can use that line alone, you know? But anyway, let's, um, we'll, uh, expect you guys back here then on, uh, December fourth, I believe it is, isn't it?
Tenth.
December tenth.
Are there other, other concerns in terms of, you know, anything on the site, the type of, you know, that we...
Well, I think we talked so much about the traffic that we, we didn't really have a lot of time to look at this. In subsequent meetings, we'll probably come up with different things and as we look at the plans.
Probably...
I'll tell you what, if I see anything about it, okay, I'll email you, okay?
See, if you guys wanna send me a collection of comments, I can pass them along.
Well, he's already got a collection of comments here.
Well, yeah. While we have him here... Yes, he wrote that memo.
Oh, cool.
Eric.
All right.
While we have him here, um, I don't see any detention ponds or anything like that shown on, so are you doing underground detention? Okay.
I can be happy to bore everybody with it as much as you'd like if you're interested.
I imagine we'll be bored with it later on in the process.
Well, you, you know, the wells in the, in that area and everything else, so I'm sure you... Well, that's gonna come up on the peer review anyway, all that stuff.
They have all the material and information.
None of us are qualified to do that kinda stuff. I did look at this book though, I was very impressed with how many pages you got.
Thought you'd get granted it.
How would you expect the average person, okay?
I wouldn't.
Huh? Even with engineering, even with engineering status, to understand that.
Jonathan, you could, you want to tell ya?
We'll be having classes on, on Saturday, so...
Twenty-two...
I did, I did smile, I did smile when I looked at it. But anyway, okay, so we're, we're gonna, uh, make a motion to, uh, continue this meeting until December tenth at, uh, seven oh five? Do you have anything else before then?
Uh, you have, uh, the, the twelve West Tech at seven?
Seven, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, you can call it seven fifteen, cause I imagine you'll have at least fifteen minutes worth of stuff for them.
All right. Did you get that? December, December tenth, seven fifteen. Is that okay with you?
I lost it.
I make a motion?
I move we continue this till December tenth.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's a vote.
Thank you.
See you guys later.
Thank you.
And when I get those memos from, um, the department, I'll just send them along to you.
Okay. Can I, uh, do you want me to save that?
I ju, I pulled the, the site plan file right onto the desktop, and I'll bring my flash drive down and grab it tomorrow.
And the, uh, traffic study too?
I just grabbed the whole folder that you had labeled site plans, that had the traffic study in it.
Okay. Can I get, can I pull this up?
Uh...
No, not yet.
I mean, you can, it's not a hard drive, it's not gonna, it's just flash memory, it's not gonna kill anything. All right.
Take it, take it away.
If you hit the, uh...
You don't even need to eject it.
Eject it?
You can if you wanna be...
Wow, man, Adam.
I don't wanna be the one responsible for the computer going wrong tomorrow.
All right, and we, we got signatures on West Tech Drive, which is postponed too.
No, that's actually eight West Tech Drive. That's the one that you approved last November that had to go to National Grid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, uh...
Down and back at Durenzo?
Yeah, or the Durenzo site. And they, um, they started working there, out there crushing rocks and moving dirt, and we get a call, so Nick went up there and turned out, "Oh, we got our National Grid approval four months ago, and they never let us know." So they finally turned in the final plans and the National Grid approval, so I actually wrote their approval letter. Uh, so it's wrapping up, uh, that one. Uh, I put it on your, I put it in front of everybody tonight, but I do have extra copies if you want.
Oh, I'm sure, I got it if you put it over here. Oh, I saw it, yeah.
Eight West?
West Tech.
Correct.
How many copies did it sign?
Just the one.
Just the one? Don't give me the smile anymore.
And it's, uh, it's site plan, so it can be signed on double sides.
I didn't get that out.
Certainly did. Bet you it's under the book on top of the eleven by seventeen, under the memo.
All right, my friend.
Nope, the other memo.
Today's date is the...
Get too many memos.
Do you wanna sign with today's date?
Yeah. We also have, uh...
Eighteen West Tech.
We also have the, um, release of Covenant from, uh...
Kansas Woods?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, is this the one that...
That's the one that I have the wrong date on at the last meeting, that, um, you all voted to release.
Just one copy?
Yeah. Cause really he, I'll take a photocopy of it and I'll give it to Mr. Boss Claire. It's in his best interest to record it, because then he can get that money taken off of his mortgage.
Adam, do the plans that were provided tonight for West Tech, do they replace the ones that were sent out in our packet?
Yes. Those were dropped off this morning.
They're not in addition?
Okay, and a new business, we have, uh, chief's proposal for systems.
So this was forwarded to me by the fire chief, uh, I included it in your packets. Uh, I don't necessarily, if you'd like to discuss it, we certainly can. Um, it's more of a, uh, this is what the chief came up with. I will make the assumption that the board would like to review it on their own, have the chief come back and have a discussion about what's included. Uh, I think my intent on putting it on there was, uh, so we didn't forget to pick a date to have the chief come back and, and set that up now so that we can make sure he'll be here.
I agree with you.
Was this another one to sign?
Yes. So, uh, you know, I guess talk amongst yourselves and, and...
This really doesn't need to be voted on?
No, it would really just be determining, you know, if, if, if somebody's going to Florida in January or Portugal in February, we should decide now and, and know that, uh, you know, they're not gonna be around for that meeting, so maybe we, we pick a, a date that we know people intend to be here at least.
Well, I think the January meeting is pretty well, uh, is pretty well packed up already.
Uh, yeah, I think that there's some, some decent stuff on the fourteenth, so if you wanna look at maybe the twenty-eighth of January or, or the first meeting in February.
Oh, yes. I will miss both those meetings.
Okay.
I won't be back till March first. So, but that's fine, Paul can handle everything. Um, so it'd be up to Paul. What, what days would you, I, I'm not gonna be here during those, uh, from January sixteenth until March first, so, you know, you, you and Ronnie and Wendy or whatever can, and John can...
And again, I don't think the fire chief is in a rush, so if you wanna wait till the first meeting in March when you're back and have the full board here to discuss it, since I think the intent is to adopt it into the rules and regulations, uh, I don't think that that would be inappropriate.
That's his intent.
All right, so that's what we'll do then. We'll, we'll, we'll actually have Adam, uh, write a letter to the, uh, fire chief stating that, uh, the first meeting in March, we'll all sit down with him and decide what, uh, what's gonna go on with the system, uh, report that he, uh, printed over.
And tri-hydrants too.
Right, so this was on the agenda for tonight, so it's a public document available for public comment.
Correct, correct.
Get public comment from other folks that might have constructive feedback.
It is, it is public, it's been submitted to the board, so, uh, and, you know, I, I think my intent is to have this adopted into the rules and regs in a, in a form that the board is comfortable with so that it's, it's actually a policy of the board, not just a, here's kind of a guidance document, but we don't have any teeth to decide to enforce it. So, uh, you know, I think the fire chief wants something in writing. I think from, from my point of view, from where I said, I think it's important that it be accepted and adopted as part of the design criteria for the board, because it then, you always have the ability to waive portions of the rules and regs in, in situations where it's appropriate, but if it's not included in there, someone can say, "Yeah, you've got this great document, but I'm not gonna do it, cause you don't have any, any teeth to force me to." Uh, and I think that sometimes that it's important to have that.
He understood a course, and I asked him twice if he understood that, that, uh, that the planning board would be the last say as far as whether it was implemented or not.
And correct, and I think that that's a big part of it being in the rules and regs. I think what he's looking at is general design criteria, what he's making a recommendation to the board, what he thinks is appropriate and, and necessary for the situation that we have, uh, and, you know, ultimately, if you're gonna adopt it into the rules and regs, you have to be comfortable with what's there, and, and then again, you have the ultimate say.
If we have questions in the meantime, can I direct those to you and then you can direct them to him? What's the process?
Yeah. I, I mean, if you, if you have direct questions, you can certainly contact him directly, and if you'd like, I can put you in touch with him. If you're more comfortable going with me, that's, that's fine.
He had, um, he, he had an open phone, you, you can...
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if we, for public meeting or anything.
No, no, as long, I mean, if three of you go and talk to him, that's a little hinky, but if you call him individ, if you each call him individually, even if you have the same conversation without talking to each other, that's not a violation, you're just information gathering.
Oh, you can do that anytime, Jonathan, any, any, in fact, even the...
Yeah, you can...
As, as a single person, you can call him, as long as it's not a quorum.
Okay.
Okay?
And you could even, you could call applicants if you really wanted to. I don't blame you, but...
And I would, and, and I, I'd encourage that, you know, if you, if you have something...
Yeah, I think you're...
Because I can't answer these questions for ya, and neither can the rest of the board members, you know, so...
You're gonna get a much better dialogue going directly to it.
Absolutely.
Sure, okay.
All right, let's see, we have here, correspondence none, uh, minutes of the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth. Do we, anybody wanna approve the minutes? Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Paul seconded?
Twenty-second and the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Can we do them together?
Both of them together, yep.
Second.
Oh, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a vote. Okay, would somebody like to, uh, adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Here's a vote.